Thank you. Our final speaker is Phil Rath. Our final speaker is Phil Rath, and Mr. Rath has time seated by Rachel Lang. Walk in.
And prior to—please, let's not clap. Let's just do this so we can get through this last speaker. Is this the last speaker?
This is our last speaker, Wilson, Sammy Hermes, Mark Youssef, Sammy Yunan, and Rocky Goyo for a total of eight minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Phil Rath. I'm the Executive Director of the San Diego United Medical Marijuana Coalition. We are a trade association of your legally permitted CUP holding dispensaries here in the city of San Diego. Our organization is committed to safe, legal, and regulated distribution of cannabis. That's the business that we're in, and we choose to do it the legal way. We are most directly impacted, I would argue, by what you're discussing today, and we have thoughts on that topic. I am here for our members in support of this item if amended. I want to be clear that there is much sensible policy in this item that's before you. The staff and the administration should be commended for proposing these rules to you before Prop 64 takes effect. I think that's been kind of lost today. I think there's a lot of yelling going on, but let's keep view of the bigger picture. This is the smart way to do it. Examples of some of the smart things in front of you are creating a framework for mobile dispensaries, clarifying public park definitions, and establishing rules for how CUPs are to be renewed. Many of these proposals have come from hard-learned lessons of the last four years that came from the city having to work with the medicinal ordinance that was passed about five years ago. Smart governments learn from their experience, and I believe that these proposals show a smart government at work. Unfortunately, there is a provision that you've heard a lot about today that we feel should be modified. The proposed ban on cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing is really short-sighted and really counter to the city's economic and public safety interests, and I want to explain why. Our shops care about this issue because we already have higher product and overhead costs than our illegal shop competitors. If you think about it, it just makes sense. We had to pay an awful lot of money to do this the legal way, and we have ongoing costs to continue to spend more than others do. One example is armed guards all the time. Illegal shops don't do that. All of those costs—to get our permits, to comply with the conditions—all the illegal shops avoid those costs. The end result, obviously, is that we have to charge higher prices. This ban would require us to purchase all wholesale product from outside of San Diego County region. There is no place. Effectively, it must be shipped long distance. That's really what you're calling for, but let's just admit that adding another cost will yet again increase our cost to our consumers. If you add in the taxes that we have to collect, the illegal shops get to ignore those, and the real cost difference is becoming quite large. After January 1, the tax structure goes up radically, and that will just make us less competitive. If this trend of adding costs to legal operators while illegal sellers avoid them continues, price differences are going to further force consumers to increase their illegal purchasing habits. You can legislate all you want, but economics is more powerful. People vote with their pocketbook, and that's what we're afraid of. This has another important consequence. The city's tax revenues will simply be less than they otherwise could be. San Diego voters supported a local tax on recreational marijuana, and we were proud to support that proposal. We're probably one of the few industries who said, yes, please tax us. Most of them come down here and scream at you when you try and do that. The only remitters of these taxes to your coffers will be our members, just so we're clear. Illegal operators don't remit taxes, just in case everybody's—anybody's confused about that. There are many reasons why this proposed ban does not make sense, and I don't want to belabor the point. You've heard a lot about it. But what should we do about it now? Our recommendation is that you approve the staff-recommended proposal with a modification to either delete the banned language or to time-limit that language in its duration to give the city time to develop reasonable regulations for where these uses can be located and under what conditions, the same as our dispensaries are. Reasonable regulations for these uses are achievable. It is not impossible to do. They will likely look very much like the proposal that's in front of you today for retail uses. Even if you aren't sure that allowing these uses is a good fit for San Diego, you have a right to be presented with methods for how it could be done. And if at the point in time in the future where those are presented, you feel like it doesn't fit, you can vote no, and that's fine. Today's vote is not to allow; it is to take a look at what would rules look like. So I don't want you to get the false impression that today is it. We're asking for an opportunity to look at reasonable approaches, and it may be that at the end everyone decides, boy, that's just not going to work for San Diego. If that's the case, that's fine. We ask that the council be thoughtful about how to best approach this issue. Bans can sound good, but often they do nothing to fix the actual safety and neighborhood issues they are intended to solve. I think we have specific examples of that here. We spent a very long time just banning all dispensaries. The numbers make it clear how ineffective that has been. We're continuing to try and shovel our way out of a backlog of illegal operations with no real end in sight. I don't think that the appeal of a ban should overcome the thoughtfulness about what's actually happened and how people, when told by the state something is legal and their right to purchase, will purchase it, whether you let them do it at a legal place or an illegal place. So we ask you to modify the proposal today, but move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public speakers on this item.
Thank you. I just would like to say thank you to the public for your comments in opposition and supporting of this item. And I have always recognized that allowing access to marijuana use for medical reasons was a humane and right thing to do. Current land-use regulations that allow for businesses to provide medical marijuana are reasonable and are working. I might not agree with allowing businesses to now sell marijuana for recreational use. However, I do recognize that citizens voted for it, and it is now the law, and I respect that. But I do not want us to wait until the state develops its regulations and licensing requirements and impose them on us. This could result in recreational marijuana businesses opening it all over the city and in particular in my district, which I do not support. Therefore, I support a motion that includes supporting staff recommendations and giving us an opportunity to have staff review the issues of cultivation, distribution, processing, storage, and testing, and return to us with recommendations that regulate these aspects of the marijuana business. With that, I will turn to councilmember questions and comments. Councilmember Zap.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone for coming down. As President Cole said, the citizens did vote for this, whatever your feelings might be, and our job is to implement. Our job is to give thoughtful consideration on the best way to implement this ordinance. There have been several sites that have been permitted for medical, and we went through a very long, thoroughly-vetted process for that. And for people to come along and just crop pop-up—have pop-up shops illegally is unfair and, I think, illegal, you know, and should not be allowed. A lot of money was spent, and they did it the right way. Violators should not be rewarded, I don't think. Passing an ordinance will also help us crack down on these illegal pot shops that, you know, they're not regulated, they're selling edibles and spice, they're untested, they're a danger, they get into the hands of our kids, and I have two teenage daughters. I'm very familiar with what goes on at our high schools, and, you know, it's not—it's not what most parents would want. Prop 64 did allow us to have local control. We do control a lot of things, everything from food trucks to parking to alcohol. Imagine if it was unfettered alcohol licenses out there. What kind of a city would we live in? That would be untenable. So it is our responsibility to set standards in our city before the state comes along and does it for us and imposes regulations on us that we may or may not want. But you know who I really want to hear—is the chief here, police chief? Oh. Could you come up and speak on this? You've heard a lot of the test—a lot of the testimony, and I'd like you—if you could just speak on your thoughts, and if you could include about the cultivation, because that's been brought up a lot.
Yeah, thank you very much. Shelley Zimmerman, Chief of Police. I'll tell you, you know, we forecasted the passage of Proposition 64, and so I directed our department personnel to travel to Denver, Colorado on multiple occasions to learn about the impacts of the legalization of marijuana. And I'll tell you is that Denver law enforcement and their government officials asked us—to take back the lessons that they learned to our policymakers, to all of you, so that our city did not make some of the same mistakes that their city did. The negative unintended consequences and secondary effects of legal marijuana industry being allowed to operate on a larger scale in our city of San Diego are enormous. Let me highlight a few of them. Some of them you've heard is that these included an increase of crime and calls for service, explosions, dangerous chemicals, organized criminal enterprises, pesticide contamination, and an increase of homelessness, just to name a few. I'll tell you, in San Diego, we have already experienced some of the negative side effects that both the legal and illegal marijuana businesses have brought. These have included a homicide, armed robberies, and burglaries. In addition, our officers have responded to hundreds of complaints, including those received from many of your council offices regarding crime and quality-of-life issues around these locations. So therefore, we believe at the Police Department that the regulations in front of you today will help us, all of us, minimize the negative impacts of the marijuana industry in our neighborhoods. And also here today is Lieutenant Matt Novak, who is the commanding officer of our narcotics unit, and he traveled to Denver on numerous occasions and would be happy to answer in more detail any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Does he have a—can he do it in a minute? Okay.
I'm sorry, and you have a specific question?
Well—
Okay. As far as manufacturing and cultivation, as the chief stated, I traveled to Denver on a couple of occasions and spoke with law enforcement officials as well as public officials there with the city. The issues that they expressed to me were ones of public health and public safety involved with cultivation facilities and manufacturing facilities that they dealt with there in Colorado, specifically for manufacturing, dealing with volatile chemicals, explosions, and fires, including injuries that occurred from that, to legal and illegal manufacturing, and then crime involved with cultivation fields and cultivation warehouses. You have to understand that most of these businesses are cash-heavy, as well as with the product that people want to steal, and then they divert it to other states to sell. And these are some of the issues specific to manufacturing and cultivation that they expressed to me.
Thank you. Was that everything? I've run out of time here myself, but—
You have, yes. You have—
Mr. Sherman has left—
Fifty more seconds, so continue.
Okay.
Sure. If I could, just run through on the PowerPoint, there were some public safety aspects up there. But some of the things, obviously, our take is that this is going to very much negatively affect public health and public safety. I already spoke to some of the issues involved with manufacturing, explosions, and that such. Cultivation plants, obviously, there's—for the workers there and for others, for large cultivation areas, including warehouses and open fields, you have pesticides and other dangerous chemicals that are used that people can be exposed to. The additional crime—the chief referred to burglaries, robberies, and homicides that we've had here in the city. We've had some significant crime associated with both the legal and the illegal dispensaries, including a shootout between a security guard and burglary suspects into one of our legal facilities, and including a homicide at a botched robbery at an illegal dispensary. On top of that, we also have increased calls for service and investigations. And as I speak of these things that are potential for San Diego, this is based on a lot of research I've done and my trips to Denver. Denver and a lot of jurisdictions in Colorado have experienced all these things, so it's not just anecdotal. It's people that have been through it for a number of years. Increased calls in service—if you can think of it, the number of facilities that would be necessary to have cultivation, manufacturing, on top of the retail businesses are additional spots that are potential for crime. As I mentioned earlier, you have a lot of marijuana and cash in these businesses, and criminals want to get this to make money, to get the drugs, and divert them to other states to make additional money. And then on top of that, you have in our neighborhoods—again, I know that the California voters and the San Diego voters voted for this, but you all have a large percentage that live in the city that didn't. And what you get from them are complaints that come through your offices, they come to us, and we have to go out and investigate them. We here in the city of San Diego do a very thorough job of investigating all calls that come in, whether it's legal or illegal. We still have to look into it, and that takes time and resources, and you're going to see a great increase in calls for service and investigations. Additionally, in Denver—we've heard a lot about money in the tax revenues that are made here from Denver officials. The money was not near enough to cover the resources that law enforcement had to expend and that the city had to use to try to govern this issue within their city. And I have a couple more points if you would like me to continue on. I don't want to take all of your time.
Well, I've just run out, but I'll see if there's other colleagues on the lights that may want to ask you and follow up. And so I'll see if other councilmembers want to ask.
Cursey extended you three minutes.
Make it two. All right. How much can you get in in two minutes?
Okay. I'll continue on until you want me to stop. I have a couple other issues I wanted to cover as far as it comes to public safety. One of those is diversion that I've already referred to a couple times, and let me just explain a little farther what exactly that is. What Colorado has seen in some other states is organized crime move into the areas under the umbrella of legalized marijuana. Their purpose there is to grow and process marijuana under—again, under the safety and umbrella of a legalized city or county, and then divert that marijuana to states where it's illegal. They're making three to four times the amount of cash that they do in a legal state, and so that's been a big issue with Colorado and would be a big issue here. Homelessness. Officials in Denver told us, and part of a Rocky Mountain Heidel report explains, that shelters in Colorado, throughout Colorado, saw a large increase to their homeless shelters, everywhere—anywhere from 30% to 150% increase since the legalization of marijuana there. It brings—the more industry there, the more workers, the more marijuana tourism it brings to people to the city, some of them are homeless. We have a great environment— sunny environment here in San Diego, and our concern is that that homelessness will increase like it did in Denver, maybe even more so.
Did you want to say anything else, chief? I have a few seconds left.
Just—I just want to reiterate is that all these issues are public safety concerns. I know many of your offices have contacted us. You hear complaints daily from your constituents. We hear complaints daily from our, you know, community members who we proudly serve, and we believe the regulations that have been brought forth with you today will greatly enhance our ability to make sure that we keep our neighborhoods safe.
Thank you, and thank you for that and all of the time—that extra time I was given. Let me just say that a couple of just recent articles. Denver has more pot shops than Starbucks. In fact, three times the number. Oregon has more pot shops than either McDonald's or Starbucks. That's, I'm sure, not what we want for our city. That's why it's important to have sensible regulations in place. And President Cole, I wasn't sure if you made that motion, or I would be happy to make the motion. I couldn't hear the last part that you wanted, but I would move stack recommendation with the caveat that you had put in there. I'd be happy to do that.
My comments were—I support a motion that includes supporting staff recommendations and giving us an opportunity to have staff review the issues of cultivation, distribution, processing, storage, and testing, and return to us with recommendations that regulate these aspects of the marijuana business. Those were my comments.
Okay. I would be happy to incorporate that. For me personally, I think that it's important that we have regulations in place before January so that the state doesn't impose anything. So I don't know how long a period, but I would say about maybe nine months would give us plenty of time, if that is acceptable to you.
Marshall Anderson, Mayor's Office. We'd be comfortable with nine months.
You—okay. I should have asked. Thank you. Are you comfortable with—
If that's your motion.
That would be my motion.
And I have a second by Councilmember Sherman. Councilmember Ward.
Yes, thank you, Council President Cole. And thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking your mind. I know this is kind of a transformational year on this subject, and it certainly could be a major step forward in our conversation over land use and marijuana access that we've had for many years under a medical marijuana framework, and today, I hope, is the first significant step that we could take as the city's policymakers to apply these lessons from the past and from elsewhere—Denver, Oregon, elsewhere—to strike a balance that respects an adult's right to access recreational marijuana safely without placing harm on our neighborhoods, our children, our public safety officers, or each other. And I approach this issue seeing the importance of shifting how we think about living with marijuana use around us. It's something that we already have been dealing with, and let's be honest, if we don't do anything, we'll continue to have around us for years to come. But voters in the city of San Diego sent a clear message to us by overwhelmingly passing Proposition 64, including majorities in all nine council districts. They told us what they expect us to do. And so for me, after living my whole life in a just-say-no world, watching a black market with unregulated practices rules and govern a plant and an industry, I'm left to ask, is there a better way that we can better harmonize the safe and restricted use of those interested in consuming marijuana, adults, with the need for safe communities and be able to capture revenue that was other—that is otherwise lost to an underground market? And I don't necessarily disagree with some of the opponent's motivations here today, that we do need to protect our kids and send a positive message. But I think that we've been struggling to do that. In fact, we've been struggling to do that effectively, and to make it clear to our kids that drug use is unacceptable, we have to go beyond rhetoric and fail blanket prohibitions and walk the walk. We need to invest more in community development, recreation, and after-school activities, education, things that actually empower kids to make decisions for themselves to say no. And as a father of a two-year-old, you better believe that I think about her future every single day. And part of that future is going to be educating her and supporting her and paying attention to her and giving her the facts and examples, and then trust in her as an adult to make the right decisions for herself. And so to this end, with some of that guiding values—and Ms. Thomas, I'm going to have a couple of questions for the attorney's office. You know, I do think that we could move forward as a city to evolve our approaches around marijuana, and I think by carefully listening to all the public, our public safety officers and others, that we should be able to craft policy that achieves these common and not necessarily conflicting goals. So to that end, I do appreciate some of the clarifying language that staff has worked on so hard, and I do think that there's actually some merit to the work that the Planning Commission had recommended as well. So I appreciate the maker of the motion and the council president willing to revisit this, and I think that by holding us to a sunset over the next nine months, that we will be able to continue to work as a city to make sure that we address issues of cultivation, the supply-market, testing. But a couple of questions also, because I'm not sure that—even if we adopted your motion as today—that these restrictions in the motion would only serve to preserve the status quo, fly in the face of the intensive San Diego voters, and also take back some of the work and guarantees and investments that medical marijuana cooperatives have already invested. So to that and Ms. Thomas, one question—we've been working on the moratorium in the last two months. What would be the status of the moratorium if we were to move forward on this today?
So the moratorium will sunset once the council's actions that are based on the subject of the moratorium take effect. So if you are to take action today on the items that are covered in the moratorium, which is the recreational, cultivation, retail, et cetera, then once those take effect, then the moratorium is no longer in place. The one caveat to that is the moratorium is extended to 12/9 of this year. If for some reason it takes longer than that to get the ordinance through the Coastal Commission and other places it would need to go, then the moratorium will still terminate within 10 months and 15 days of the last extension, regardless of whether today's ordinance is in effect or not.
And regardless of the type of ordinance or restrictions or opening it up to the Wild West, whatever we choose to pass today, nothing is still allowed to proceed in a business format until the state actually adopts its regulations. Is that accurate?
For the commercial—
Correct.
Cannabis businesses, correct. And I also did want to point out that for the commercial recreational businesses, that we can be a gatekeeper to the state licensing if we have an ordinance in effect that states what our desire is. The state will look to that before they issue their license and will not issue their license in conflict with that. If we do not have anything, then they will issue their license just in accordance with their own regulations.
So we do have at least a little bit of time to be able to work out some of the finer details under a CUP process or addressing some of these other—
Yes, the state has to begin licensing by January 1 of next year. They state they are on track to do that. I—as everyone suspects—it will be fairly close, but we can't give them an exact date.
And as this ordinance is drafted, we heard from some of this testimony today that there would be an adverse impact on medical marijuana cooperatives to be able to provide delivery service to their patients, to be able to do testing on-site, which I think it's important that the product is tested to certain standards that they have already adopted today. Would that be accurate?
Well, the ordinance actually allows deliveries from licensed CUPs and as otherwise in accordance with Prop 215. As for testing under Prop 64, those facilities have to only be testing facilities; they cannot have another license.
And we would not be allowing testing facilities here—
We are—we are proposing—the ordinance proposes to not allow any testing facilities.
Okay. And then my last question is, under Proposition 64, it authorized or potentially permitted the personal cultivation outdoor in secured structures as drafted here, that this ordinance would not allow that?
That is part of Sub Item B, yes.
Okay. So Ms. Zap, I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment. I think I had three points kind of coming into this conversation. It sounds like the first point to allow for a sunset on these issues of nine months was addressed, but I'd also like to ask if you'd be willing to amend your motion under Section 21 to ensure that businesses with an approved zoning use certificate or business tax certificate as of today's date be grandfathered in under existing regulations.
Are we saying—are you saying that anyone who has a business tax license, although they are not a medical marijuana, would get to be a recreational pot shop?
No. I'm saying those that are medical marijuana cooperatives that do testing on-site, that have to date been able to enjoy certain business practices, be grandfathered in under the ordinance date as they've already existed lawfully last year.
I'm a little unclear. The ones that are permitted now as medical marijuana that have the permits, they're just changing—in my understanding, in this ordinance, they're just—they're changing over into a medical—excuse me, into a marijuana—I don't even know what to call it. Recreational—
There are various medical marijuana businesses that have a business tax certificate. You're talking about a category of cooperatives that have a conditional use permit. They—excuse me, they also have a business tax certificate, but there are other businesses that engage in cultivation, testing, et cetera, that have business tax certificates, and that's the category that Councilmember Kate—sorry, excuse me, Councilmember Ward is referring to. Over. A few more seats.
All right. I'm going to pass on that one.
Okay.
To get rid of the security and people can just grow—is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. For a secure accessory structure, like, for example, a greenhouse in someone's backyard.
Doesn't it call for that already? A secure accessory structure? I just want to make sure that it's secure.
Councilmembers, I want to have perhaps Deputy City Attorney Michelle Garland, who assisted in drafting that section, can help you with—
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Michelle Garland, Deputy City Attorney. Just to clarify, under the ordinance as proposed, and this is part of Sub Item B, cultivation within a secure, fully enclosed accessory structure such as a greenhouse would be allowed. What would not be allowed is unsecured personal outdoor cultivation, such as cultivation in a garden, in a backyard.
So as the ordinance is drafted, Section 42, 1304, Sub Item B says, "No person sell, plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors upon the grounds of a private residence."
Correct.
So that would be prohibitive, regardless if it's secured or unsecured?
Under Proposition 64, it does require it to be secured in some manner, which could be a locked gate surrounding a backyard. What this ordinance clarifies is that a greenhouse within a backyard or some other type of structure that is fully enclosed and secured would be allowed, and that's actually allowed under Proposition 64— under Proposition 64. The city cannot ban that. What the city does have the option to either ban or regulate is unsecured outdoor cultivation, as I said, such in a garden.
And I would concur with that. Would it be possible to accept a motion then to amend this subsection B that articulates that unless a accessory structure, a secured accessory structure, i.e. a greenhouse, is utilized? Again, I think that as it's written, anything outside of my home would be prohibited, including if it was in a greenhouse.
It may already be addressed in Subsection A, number two, where it says, "For purposes of this section, indoor marijuana cultivation includes cultivation in a fully enclosed and secure accessory structure to a private residence." So what you're proposing may already be addressed in the ordinance.
I think clarification there would just help because, as you said, under Section A, that says indoor, and Subsection B says outdoor, and I just wouldn't want to put any ambiguity in this ordinance that was unnecessary.
Okay, well, we could certainly look at...
Agree. If you're looking at it and you're saying "may," then it's a little unclear if the legal team is saying "may." I think that, you know, in reading, you know, I don't have the exact ordinance in front of me, but outdoor growing of personal residential marijuana, and then now just secured outdoor greenhouse permitted, can they still grow it even if it's not like in a greenhouse, but it is secure? Mr. Murphy, do you know?
Proposition 64 would allow for that, but what's being proposed here in the ordinance would not allow for that type of cultivation.
The way, and I'll, let me just step in, Dan, or Amanda, the way it's ordered, written right now is if you have an outdoor garden, as Michelle was just saying, and it's in your backyard and fenced, but it is accessible, there's no roof over it, there's no walls, that would not be permitted by this ordinance. If you had a greenhouse, and the greenhouse consists of a roof, doors, and walls, that would be permitted. That is an accessory structure.
Before commenting on that further, I'd like to hear from some of my other colleagues on where they're, where they're out with that. Did you have any other?
Yes, Councilmember Bree, you're on the line.
First of all, thank you all for coming out today to let us know your point of view on this very controversial issue. As we know, Proposition 64 was passed overwhelmingly by a majority of voters in the state and in the city of San Diego. And I believe it's our responsibility to implement the will of the voters and to ensure that the revenues are there so that public safety has the positions and the tools they need to enforce. It's also our duty to wisely and responsibly regulate every part of the supply chain in order to ensure that our consumers have a safe and vetted product. I will support your amendments, Councilmember Ward, and I appreciate your thoughtful comments. I'd just like to make a few more points. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Kersey, who proposed Measure N, which is a gross receipts tax, which allows us to tax every part of the supply chain. I believe that if we prohibit cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and testing, we will actually harm public safety in the long run. Testing, I believe, is particularly important so that we, that our consumers have products that they know they can rely on. And as we know, testing laboratories of any kind are already highly regulated. And as we also know, testing labs do not sell or distribute any cannabis products. I'm a high-tech entrepreneur, as most of you know, and there are legitimate biotech companies, researchers, and investors working with marijuana for medical research and clinical studies. And I believe this has enormous potential, and San Diego can be a center of this growing industry. We clearly need a professional and regulated local industry, particularly in light of our strong regional expertise in biomedical research, which is centered in my district in District One. Thank you.
I'm going to let the city attorney jump in here real quick to give us some clarity.
Just to clarify, the motion that I understood was staff recommendation with the additional direction to staff to review, as is on the screen. I did hear some conversation about a sunset clause. I do not, just so everyone is clear, I do not believe that that is part of the motion. If there was an intent to include some kind of sunset clause, I think we need to be clear. But I don't think, as I understood Councilmember Zapp's motion, that it did not. So... So what's on the screen does not include a sunset motion? And perhaps Councilmember Zapp can just, let us know if that's her motion on the, on the screen.
But it has us returning within nine months with a recommendation.
Yes.
So what you're saying is, what I wanted to do was have it come back within the nine months, and you're saying that, what, if it doesn't come back in the nine months, that, what does the sunset clause do?
I was just asking for clarification because I believe there was some discussion about a sunset clause. I just wanted to make sure all the council members were clear that as, as proposed, you have not proposed a sunset clause.
I have not proposed a sunset clause at this...
Right. If you would like to do so, we can discuss that. But I just want to make sure it's super clear because there were some comments that indicated that there, there might have been a sunset clause in the motion.
No, I was including what Ms. Cole had asked for, and so maybe I...
I don't believe Council President Cole asked for a sunset clause.
That was not in my motion.
Coming back, okay. If I could hear the rest of the discussion right now, and then we'll clean this all up.
We're going to turn to Councilmember Gomez.
Okay, trying to figure out what we're doing here. So just to clarify, is there a motion? And if not, I'll be more than happy to make a motion right now.
No, there's a motion. At this...
Just give me a second, too.
I have a point of clarification for the clerk. Is a substitute motion allowed, or to the city attorney's office?
I do not believe that a substitute motion is allowed. As all of us know, we do have the Permanent Rules of Counsel, which outline the procedures for debate. It does refer to Robert's Rules of Order. When the Permanent Rules are silent, Robert's Rules of Order talks very specifically about the fact that, and I, I did a little bit of research on it because I had heard that there might be a question, but only, a fundamental principle of parliamentary law is only one question can be considered at a time. Once a motion is before the decision-making body, it must be adopted or rejected by a vote, or the decision-making body must take action disposing of the question in some other way. Some of the, some of the possibilities are subsidiary motions, and one of those is to amend. Typically, this body has done amendments through friendly amendments, which are to ask the maker and secondor of the motion if they would, would consider it. If they say no, the way this body has handled it is to take a vote on the motion that's on the floor, as is. If it fails, to consider a subsequent motion clean. However, since the Permanent Rules of Counsel do point to Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules of Order when it's silent, it is possible to request that an amendment be voted on by the body. So in other words, there's a motion on the floor. If the maker and secondor do not wish to incorporate a friendly amendment into that motion, there could be a request when someone has the floor appropriately to vote on an amendment to be inserted into the motion. The amendment would be voted on, and then if it fails, the original motion still stands. If it passes, the original motion is voted on with the amendment that passed. That, that's the process.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Council President, may I ask a quick point of clarification?
My time is running.
Yes.
Thank you. So per the city clerk's instructions, because I didn't think I get to, had a concluding sentence in my remarks, and I did hear that my friendly recommendation request was denied, I'd like to make a motion for amendments that would satisfy, A, we include a sunset in the original motion. That would, that basically be the stick that forces us to come back here and revisit the issue with nine months, not let this lie. B, amend the section that deals with outdoor personal cultivation in Subsection B so that it is in harmony with Subsection A by adding the language, no, or process marijuana plants outdoors in an unsecured location upon the grounds of a private residence. And C, that we...
And can I just interrupt you for a minute, Mr. Ward? Typically, because there is the original motion on the floor, and Ms. Gomez was in the middle of her time, we would finish out the discussion on the particular motion, and then we would go back to have you lay out your potential amendments and vote on them one by one in order to determine whether or not they should be incorporated into the motion. So I apologize, it's just that I had actually stepped all over her time by talking for a couple minutes.
I, I can give a minute and a half to Chris.
We're going to hear from Council President Pro Tim Kersey.
If that's the case...
Or Ms., okay, or you want to finish your time?
I would like to give two minutes to Chris. I'm sorry? Yes.
Would you like to second my, my motion for amendment?
Yes, I'll be, I would love to second his motion.
Did you want to speak? Or just second the motion?
Yes, well, I wanted to, that's why I was asking for clarification. He's submitting the motion, I would like to second that.
I got your second. All right, now can we turn to Council President Pro Tim Kersey?
There was a third point, that we remove Section, I think it was at 21, that would, that would restrict the existing businesses out there that hold a business tax certificate from any, any previously conforming use. So it's a three-part amendment.
Got it. And what we're going to do after Council President Pro Tim Kersey makes his comment, then we're going to take a five-minute, a 10-minute recess to get all this on the screen and to make sure that it's correct. So, Council President Pro Tim.
If you would like, we could do that now, and I'll resume my comments when we get back.
Let's take a 10-minute recess.
It's in, it's in Sub Item B, number... It's in sub item B, number...[130.63] Okay, I'm calling this meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience. Council President Pro Tim Kersey.
Thank you, Council President. Could we, how are we with getting the motion back up on the screen? Is that somewhere?
We have the main motion, and then we have each of the amendments as a separate slide, which will be voted on separately. We'll put the main motion back up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. So, I would support Councilmember Ward's nine-month sunsetting in terms of coming up with some narrowly crafted cultivation, manufacturing, testing. Actually, I'm not sure testing should be in there, but we can leave that for another day. Some narrowly crafted regulations on those things. And then, I think the clarification on the Second Amendment is fine as well, because it is a little bit confusing when you look at A2 and B. B kind of conflicts with A2 if you read it one way, so I think that's fine. And the third thing on the grandfathering, I wasn't supportive initially, but then I think I would be supportive if it was, if the grandfathering was worded in such a fashion that it was just for the duration of the sunset, so for the nine months, rather than grandfathered indefinitely.
Yes, Councilmember Kersey, and I think in discussion with the city clerk and city attorney, one, it's not our intent to grandfather any illegal dispensaries, so as you'll see the amendment come up, it's going to require those, the businesses with an approved zoning use certificate and a business tax certificate as of today's date. And two, it would also no longer be applicable when we have come back and revisited the revised ordinances around cultivation, distribution, processing. So basically, when we have that larger conversation and future conversation, the existing businesses to date would be brought in then to a framework that everybody would have to be regulated under.
Yeah, and I think that's fair, and I would support that. So, just a clarification, we're going to vote on the amendments first? Is that correct, Council President?
Well, we have amendment to the motion to approve staff recommendation.
So, the way we'll be doing it is each amendment will be up on the screen. There'll be a separate motion for each amendment, a separate vote, and then as each is approved or not approved, at the end, the final motion will be read into the record, so you know exactly what it contains before you vote on it.
May I ask a clarification as the maker of the motion? If I am okay with and accept the sunset and the grandfathering just for the nine months, do we need to vote on them separately?
As long as the maker and seconder of the motion agree with the amendments, they can be incorporated into the main motion, and then there would just be the vote on the amendment that you are not friendly to.
But Mr. Kate is going to speak first. I'm just asking as a clarification if it is accepted, if we need to do it separately.
So, if Mr. Sherman is okay with it as the seconder of the motion? And then, at the end, I will make sure to read into the record exactly what the motion is before you all vote on it, so you know exactly what you're voting on. But if that's the case, then we would, the sunsetting as well as the grandfathering would not be voted on separately. There would just be the amendment that we have with the indoor/outdoor, and I can read it if you all are ready, but Mr. Kate's on the lights. Did you want to speak before the votes?
If, if Councilmember Zaff is okay with the grandfathering nine months, I guess my question is regarding to the second one about the outdoor cultivation and the clarification and comments with the city attorney's office. If the intent of the language is shifted or changes based on the small addition to the text, if it's still stated that if it's unsecured outside on your premises, that is technically still not allowed, it has to be secured if it is outdoors? If that intent is still within the amended or the recommended amendment?
As I understand it, the intent behind with the new addition to the language does change slightly. What I understand is the original intent was not to allow outdoor cultivation at all, which would exclude cultivation in a greenhouse. My understanding of the proposed amendment is that the intent is to allow outdoor cultivation, such as in a garden, so long as consistent with Prop 64, there is some sort of locked gate around the yard or garden or what have you. That's my understanding of the intent.
Okay.
And that's the proposed amendment up on the screen.
For amendment three, do we have all three amendments?
Okay, that was a little different than what I would originally thought of, but I'll leave it to Councilmember Ward to what, if that's his intent as well, too. But that was not my intent. My intent was to try to make it clarified, so if it is in a greenhouse, a locked, secured facility, or something that just, you know, a chain link gate around there where you can just hop over the gate, and that's not something I would be supportive of. But if it's in a greenhouse that is in your backyard, that it's locked, I'm okay with that, but not if it's just a gate around the garden. That's nothing I'm not supportive of.
Councilmember Alvarez, you're on the lights.
Just going to make a very quick comment. I think a lot of the issues that were raised today could have been handled had we have gone through a different process. This was directly came to us with clearly a lot of work that needed to be done, especially stakeholders who had a lot of feedback. The amendments that are presented to the original motion, I think, tried to get to some of that feedback that was received today, and appreciate that. I would not support the original motion, given that the way it's stated, the original motion without these amendments would essentially be a ban on a going-forward basis. Okay? Very clearly, that's what it is. Don't let anybody confuse you about that. It would ban cultivation, harvest, and testing, and that's what the intent was. Now, if we approve these amendments, then at the minimum, we'll have an opportunity over the course of time to have a real dialogue, to figure out what are the best ways to regulate this, to do this in a way that is secure and it is the best way to move forward, so that there could be a process that people understand. The reason why this has been so chaotic is because it was brought on like this. Clearly, a lot of people, I think even venture to say, some people who are sitting up here might not understand what was before us, and so we do need to sunset this so that we come back with a real solution that actually achieves the goals, I think, that everybody wants to achieve, and not let everybody sort of up in the air without knowing what the future is. So, supportive of the amendments, that's what I'm speaking on behalf of, not supportive of the original motion, which would effectively be a ban.
Okay, so the city clerk will read into the records what we're voting on, so.
Okay, so my understanding is that since amendments one and two that related to the sunset as well as the grandfathering are acceptable to both the maker and the seconder of the motion, those are now part of the original motion, so I'm going to leave that alone for now. The first vote is just on this amendment three, which is adding language to Section 42.1304B and adding language "in an unsecured location," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in an unsecured location upon the grounds of a private residence." So, that's the amendment that's currently on the floor.
Council President, because it's my amendment and in consult with Councilmembers Kate and Kersey, I think that we have even further language to improve the intention of this amendment. I'll defer to Councilmember Kersey.
Thank you, I think. Yeah, so what I would do, just to clarify kind of what Councilmember Kate was talking about, so instead of "in an unsecured location," it would say something to the effect of,[683.41][683.41]"in anything other than a secured structure."
No person shall. Okay, we have clarification on that, and we'll, it's on the board?
Okay, so, so the amendment would read, adding language to Section 42.1304B and "anything other than an unsecured structure," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in an unsecured location upon the grounds of a private residence." So, that's the amendment that is currently on the floor.
Council President, because it's my amendment and in consult with Councilmembers Kate and Kersey, I think that we have even further language to improve the intention of this amendment. I'll defer to Councilmember Kersey.
Thank you, I think. Yeah, so what I would do, just to clarify kind of what Councilmember Kate was talking about, so instead of "in an unsecured location," it would say something to the effect of, "in anything other than a secured structure."
No person shall.
Okay, we have clarification on that, and we'll, it's on the board?
Okay, so, so the amendment would read, adding language to Section 42.1304B and "anything other than an unsecured structure," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in an unsecured location upon the grounds of a private residence." So, that's the amendment that is currently on the floor.
Council President, because it's my amendment and in consult with Councilmembers Kate and Kersey, I think that we have even further language to improve the intention of this amendment. I'll defer to Councilmember Kersey.
Thank you, I think. Yeah, so what I would do, just to clarify kind of what Councilmember Kate was talking about, so instead of "in an unsecured location," it would say something to the effect of, "in anything other than a secured structure." Should I read it again, or is that all right?
So, it's "anything other than a secured structure." That's the amendment that is currently on the floor.
There are no other questions or comments, is that correct?
And the motion was made by Mr. Ward and seconded by Ms. Gomez.
Marshall Anderson, Mayor's Office, can we see the proposed motion, please? The proposed amendment on outdoor cultivation?
I can read it to you again into the record.
Please.
Adding language to Section 42.1304B and "anything other than a secured structure," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in anything other than a secured structure." Should I read it again, or is that all right? So, it's "anything other than a secured structure." That's the amendment that is currently on the floor.
There are no other questions or comments, is that correct?
And the motion was made by Mr. Ward and seconded by Ms. Gomez.
Marshall Anderson, Mayor's Office, can we see the proposed motion, please? The proposed amendment on outdoor cultivation?
I can read it to you again into the record.
Please.
Adding language to Section 42.1304B and "anything other than a secured structure," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in anything other than a secured structure upon the grounds of a private residence."
Could we have further definition of what "process" means?
Or "secure"?
That was actually already in the municipal code.
What does "secure" mean?
We'd be amiable to that change.
All right.
Okay, so that is the motion on the floor.
Okay, so, please, everyone vote. Is there, oh, the city attorney, okay, please.
Was there a question as to a definition?
I think we're, I think we're okay. And so, are we voting on only that amendment?
Only on the amendment.
Because with that, I'm fine with all three, and we could have just voted as a package.
That, third amendment only, and then we will vote on the entire motion, which I'll read into the record once we know whether or not this amendment is approved by the body.
Okay.
Again, please vote. Clerk, please call a roll.
That passes unanimously. So, therefore, now, the main motion that's on the floor, just for complete clarity, motion by Councilmember Zaff, seconded by Councilmember Sherman, to approve staff's recommendation to introduce the ordinances in sub-items A, B, and C, and adopt the resolution in sub-item D, with the request to have staff review the issues of cultivation, distribution, processing, storage, and testing, and return within nine months with recommendations that regulate these aspects of the marijuana business, including the following amendments. Amendment one, which is required that the proposed amendments to Section 131.0112 sunset nine months after council adoption of the ordinance. Amendment two, ensure that those businesses with an approved zoning use certificate and a business tax certificate as of today's date. And two, it would also no longer be applicable when we have come back and revisited the revised ordinances around cultivation, distribution, processing. So, basically, when we have that larger conversation and future conversation, the existing businesses to date would be brought in then to a framework that everybody would have to be regulated under.
Yeah, and I think that's fair, and I would support that. So, just a clarification, we're going to vote on the amendments first? Is that correct, Council President?
Well, we have amendment to the motion to approve staff recommendation.
So, the way we'll be doing it is each amendment will be up on the screen. There'll be a separate motion for each amendment, a separate vote, and then as each is approved or not approved, at the end, the final motion will be read into the record, so you know exactly what it contains before you vote on it.
May I ask a clarification as the maker of the motion? If I am okay with and accept the sunset and the grandfathering just for the nine months, do we need to vote on them separately?
As long as the maker and seconder of the motion agree with the amendments, they can be incorporated into the main motion, and then there would just be the vote on the amendment that you are not friendly to.
But Mr. Kate is going to speak first. I'm just asking as a clarification if it is accepted, if we need to do it separately.
So, if Mr. Sherman is okay with it as the seconder of the motion? And then, at the end, I will make sure to read into the record exactly what the motion is before you all vote on it, so you know exactly what you're voting on. But if that's the case, then, then we would, the sunsetting as well as the grandfathering would not be voted on separately. There would just be the amendment that we have with the indoor/outdoor, and I can read it if you all are ready, but Mr. Kate's on the lights. Did you want to speak before the votes?
If, if Councilmember Zaff is okay with the grandfathering nine months, I guess my question is regarding to the second one about the outdoor cultivation and the clarification and comments with the city attorney's office. If the intent of the language is shifted or changes based on the small addition to the text, if it's still stated that if you, if it's unsecured outside on your premises, that is technically still not allowed, it has to be secured if it is outdoors? If that intent is still within the amended or the recommended amendment?
As I understand it, the intent behind with the new addition to the language does change slightly. What I understand is the original intent was not to allow outdoor cultivation at all, which would exclude cultivation in a greenhouse. My understanding of the proposed amendment is that the intent is to allow outdoor cultivation, such as in a garden, so long as consistent with Prop 64, there is some sort of locked gate around the yard or garden or what have you. That's my understanding of the intent.
Okay.
And that's the proposed amendment up on the screen.
For amendment three, do we have all three amendments?
Okay, that was a little different than what I would originally thought of, but I'll leave it to Councilmember Ward to what, if that's his intent as well, too. But that was not my intent. My intent was to try to make it clarified, so if it is in a greenhouse, a locked, secured facility, or something that just, you know, a chain link gate around there where you can just hop over the gate, and that's not something I would be supportive of. But if it's in a greenhouse that is in your backyard, that it's locked, I'm okay with that, but not if it's just a gate around the garden. That's something I'm not supportive of.
Councilmember Alvarez, you're on the lights.
Just going to make a very quick comment. I think a lot of the issues that were raised today could have been handled had we have gone through a different process. This was, directly came to us with clearly a lot of work that needed to be done, especially stakeholders who had a lot of feedback. The amendments that are presented to the original motion, I think, tried to get to some of that feedback that was received today, and appreciate that. I would not support the original motion, given that the way it's stated, the original motion without these amendments would essentially be a ban on a going-forward basis. Okay? Very clearly, that's what it is. Don't let anybody confuse you about that. It would ban cultivation, harvest, and testing, and that's what the intent was. Now, if we've approved these amendments, then at the minimum, we'll have an opportunity over the course of time to have a real dialogue, to figure out what are the best ways to regulate this, to do this in a way that is secure and it is the best way to move forward, so that there could be a process that people understand. The reason why this has been so chaotic is because it was brought on like this. Clearly, a lot of people, I think even venture to say, some people who are sitting up here might not understand what was before us, and so we do need to sunset this so that we come back with a real solution that actually achieves the goals, I think, that everybody wants to achieve, and not let everybody sort of up in the air without knowing what the future is. So, supportive of the amendments, that's what I'm speaking on behalf of, not supportive of the original motion, which would effectively be a ban.
Okay, so the city clerk will read into the records what we're voting on, so.
Okay, so, my understanding is that since amendments one and two that related to the sunset as well as the grandfathering are acceptable to both the maker and the seconder of the motion, those are now part of the original motion, so I'm going to leave that alone for now. The first vote is just on this amendment three, which is adding language to Section 42.1304B and adding language "in an unsecured location," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in an unsecured location upon the grounds of a private residence." So, that's the amendment that's currently on the floor.
Council President, because it's my amendment and in consult with Councilmembers Kate and Kersey, I think that we have even further language to improve the intention of this amendment. I'll defer to Councilmember Kersey.
Thank you, I think. Yeah, so what I would do, just to clarify kind of what Councilmember Kate was talking about, so instead of "in an unsecured location," it would say something to the effect of, "in anything other than a secured structure."
No person shall. Okay, we have clarification on that, and we'll, it's on the board?
Okay, so, so the amendment would read, adding language to Section 42.1304B and "anything other than an unsecured structure," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in anything other than a secured structure," and a secured structure. Should I read it again, or is that all right? So, it's "anything other than a secured structure." That's the amendment that is currently on the floor?
There are no other questions or comments, is that correct?
And the motion was made by Mr. Ward and seconded by Ms. Gomez.
Marshall Anderson, Mayor's Office, can we see the proposed motion, please? The proposed amendment on outdoor cultivation?
I can read it to you again into the record.
Please.
Adding language to Section 42.1304B and "anything other than a secured structure," so that B reads in its entirety, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in anything other than a secured structure upon the grounds of a private residence."
Could we have further definition of what "process" means?
Or "secure"?
That was actually already in the municipal code.
What does "secure" mean?
We'd be amiable to that change.
All right.
Okay, so that is the motion on the floor.
Okay, so, please, everyone vote. Is there, oh, the city attorney, okay, please.
Was there a question as to a definition?
I think we're, I think we're okay. And so, are we voting on only that amendment?
Only on the amendment.
Because with that, I'm fine with all three, and we could have just voted as a package.
That, third amendment only, and then we will vote on the entire motion, which I'll read into the record once we know whether or not this amendment is approved by the body.
Okay.
Again, please vote. Clerk, please call a roll.
That passes unanimously. So, therefore, now, the main motion that's on the floor, just for complete clarity, motion by Councilmember Zaff, seconded by Councilmember Sherman, to approve staff's recommendation to introduce the ordinances in sub-items A, B, and C, and adopt the resolution in sub-item D, with the request to have staff review the issues of cultivation, distribution, processing, storage, and testing, and return within nine months with recommendations that regulate these aspects of the marijuana business, including the following amendments. Amendment one, which is required that the proposed amendments to Section 131.0112 sunset nine months after council adoption of the ordinance. Amendment two, ensure that those businesses with an approved zoning use certificate and business tax certificate as of today's date, January 31, 2017, be grandfathered in and are a previously conforming use until such time that council adopts regulations related to issues of cultivation, distribution, processing, storage, and testing, and finally, adding language to Section 42.1304B, "in anything other than a secured structure," so that B reads, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in an unsecured location," I apologize, "No person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process marijuana plants outdoors in anything other than a secured structure upon the grounds of a private residence." That's the, that's the entire motion.
Councilmember Zaff.
Just, real quick, I just want to clarify, I just want to make sure that this can in no way be construed by any of the illegal dispensaries out there, that they are somehow grandfathered in, correct? This is only for the, you know, testing and cultivation and so forth, but no illegal dispensaries can go out and think that they are somehow grandfathered in.
That is our intent.
Is that in the intent of everybody?
That is the intent.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other council member comments or questions? All right, do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
By Zaff and seconded by, that's the original motion by Councilmember Sherman is seconded. Please vote. Clerk, please call a roll.
And that passes unanimously.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're still, we're still, we have no adjournments in memory, so, please note that the regularly scheduled council meeting on Monday, February the 6, 2017, has been adjourned. We will now adjourn council to the next regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, February the 7, 2017, at 10:00 a.m. We are adjourned.